Nice to see everyone tonight. I love the October meeting. We always get a special treat. Instead of doing the flag salute tonight, the choral ears from the high school are going to sing the National Anthem for us and then one song after that. So please stand for the National Anthem. We'll let them go.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
They have one more for us.
Give me the beat. Whoa, give me the beat. Give me the beat. Whoa, give me the beat.
Give me the beat.
Give me the beat. Whoa, give me the beat.
Give me the beat. Do, do, do.
They have today a more clung tune.
Do, do, do.
They're looking for the light with a morning ray.
With a morning ray.
I know that is a game that I hate too.
Do, do, do.
And I'm feeling the strength.
You are a song. Oh, give me the beat, boys, and free my soul. I want to get lost in your rock and roll and drift away. Oh, give me the beat, boys, and free my soul. I want to get lost in your rock and roll and drift away. Do, do, do. Do, do, do. Do, do, do. Do, do, do.
You didn't think I would waste my time.
Do, do, do.
I don't understand the things I do.
Do, do, do.
The world outside looks so unkind.
Do, do, do.
And I'm counting on you.
You are a song. Oh, give me the beat, boys, and free my soul. I want to get lost in your rock and roll and drift away. Oh, give me the beat, boys, and free my soul. I want to get lost in your rock and roll and drift away. Do, do, do. Do, do, do. Do, do, do. Do, do, do.
When my mind is free, no melody can move me.
It can be.
And when I'm feeling blue, it's hours coming through to soothe me. Thanks for the joy that you've given me.
The joy you've given me. Oh.
That you can know I'm breathing a song.
I'm breathing a song. Rhythm and rhyme.
Rhythm and rhyme.
Oh, I hardly. Oh.
Being alone. Making me strong. Oh, give me the beat, boys, and free my soul. I want to get lost in your rock and roll and drift away. La, da, 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 da. Oh, give me the beat, boys, and free my soul. I want to get lost in your rock and roll and drift away. La, da, 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 da. Drift away, oh, way.
Thank you very much, you guys. That sounded really good. I'm very impressed. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Come back next month. Okay, moving along to our consent agenda. We have one change on before we vote. The September 28th minutes, we're not ready yet. So we'll have to pull those, pull that part out. We can vote on the rest of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Who was the second?
Erv. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Student reps. Courtney, are you solo tonight?
Yeah, Carmen, I know she actually just had a really bad knee surgery, actually.
Oh.
So she's recovering from that and she's still really involved with her volleyball team. So it's just me tonight. So ASV this month is in the process of creating Battle Month for the month of November. It's replacing our coin drive and it's a new and improved way of gaining money for the Tree of Giving. Medical Teams Internationals, no, Tree of Giving. I am so sorry for the Tree of Giving. So every week has one big event going on and these events include a macho volleyball tournament, a pancake breakfast, and a Halloween themed dance for the kids and a lot of more smaller events. And FFA led by Sarah MacArthur and Scott Towery is preparing to send their Vet Sciences team off to Nationals in two weeks. The National Convention takes place in Louisville, Kentucky from October 28th to the 31st. Best of luck to Jasmine Hill, Erica Fitch, Kate Brazelton, and Ashley Main as they represent our school in this competition. The Interact Club is in the process of planning their annual Saka Food Drive and they have been working with the Rotary Club. The rest of our clubs at the high school are currently in the process of recruiting students to join and planning their events for the year. Our football team coached by John Mannion is currently 2-2 in league and ranked 11th in state. Their next game is at home this Friday at 7:00 against Central High School. Our volleyball team is currently ranked 12th in state and have a league record of 7-3 and an overall record of 11-7. They are ranked second in league behind Lebanon who is ranked second in state. They're doing very well considering they started 36th in state. They have a home game tomorrow against South Albany at 6:30. Our cross-country team ran the Sandali Golf Course Invitational last week and it was a very successful meet all around. Senior Maddie Furman shattered the school record with a 44-second personal record of 18:05. Our boys team is currently first in the district and fifth in state and our girls team is fifth in districts. Our girls soccer team is having a fantastic season so far. They have an overall record of 6-1-2 and are currently undefeated in league. Their next game is tomorrow at Central High School at 6:00. The boys soccer team has an overall record of 2-4-3 and have a home game tomorrow night versus Central High School. The game starts at 6:00 and our sports team would love any of your support. Go Foxes. And that's all I have for clubs and sports tonight.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you, Courtney.
Thanks.
Good job. Okay, we'll move to our first audience with visitors. Like I said before, we're glad you're here tonight and we welcome you to address the board. Please be certain to sign in at the table before you present and to ensure, sign in and then introduce yourselves to us, please. And to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. So if you're speaking for a group, please identify yourself as that. A second audience with visitors will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items that occur in this meeting. So would anyone care to address the board? No one?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up. Go ahead and sign in and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Annie Carlson. I am here to represent several other staff members from Robert Frost School. I have served as the reading specialist at Robert Frost for the past eight years. I have also, I have two grandchildren who have been well-served by the Silver Falls School District. And I also have the perspective of having served in two other districts in my teaching career. I am here to discuss briefly a couple of issues that I have seen impact our families, students, and staff over the past several years and that have recently cropped up again in the wake of some happenings at Robert Frost School. The first is, has to do with our ELD students and families, those for whom English is a second language. The district has struggled historically to provide for the needs. I know those of you who've been on the board for a while, there was actually a lawsuit at one point. And since that, the district has seemed to do a much better job of using those funds allocated for ELD families, for those students and families. Recently, it seems that the staff, both certified and classified, who are serving ELD families are getting squeezed tighter and tighter and tighter, which means that our families, all our families, are not receiving the support they deserve. So that's one. The other, the other issue, which again has, I've kind of seen back and forth, is the recognition of the critical role that our classified employees play in our district. I appreciated the district making a real effort at the beginning of this school year to start off our first district meeting with all employees. And I think we just really need to make sure that that intention is fully, fully supported in, for our classified. They are so essential to the running of our buildings, to the experience of our children. I can hark back just to last spring and there was the issue with SEDEXO. Many classified employees came to speak to the way that the SEDEXO took over the kitchens. I know our, our Steve, our only cook, who has since resigned, but she just kind of came in one day to find that her, her stuff was just shoved to the side and there was somebody new in there. There had been very little heads up. There was not the kind of communication that you would expect. That shows respect for, for people who have been serving our district and our children and our families with a smile for many, well, it doesn't matter for how long they've done it. It's just when they are there serving, they need to be treated with, with the respect they deserve. And this has recently come up at Robert Frost in the wake of a resignation.
Annie, I have to, I have to jump in here a little bit. We're not, the board, we don't talk about personnel issues here, so.
Okay, so can I put on record that those of us at Robert Frost who have worked with Vanessa Moore?
No, no, no.
I can't do that?
No, we're not allowed to talk about personnel issues in this setting.
Can I, I just can't express appreciation for her service. Can I do that?
Well, you just did.
I think I just did. I think I just did.
But to mention a name and things is a little inappropriate for this setting.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, you mentioned families not getting support they deserve. Can you expand on that? That's kind of odd.
There, in many other school districts, you will find a lot more support in the office for families that will be calling in who do not speak English or at least some hookup for, for being able to communicate quickly with those families. I am one of the very few people at Robert Frost that speaks Spanish and I will be called in, which I don't mind at all if I'm not teaching, to field a phone call or, or deal with a parent. Recently, I was, actually luckily, I was available to come in when a Spanish-speaking mom came in with her third grader and wanted to tell us that her child was unhappy, not wanting to come to school because she was being teased at recess. She's very tiny. She suffers from spina bifida and has trouble physically. And, and she, you know, hears this mom. She said, you know, this child doesn't, she didn't want me to say anything, but, but I felt I needed to come. I was the only person that could hear this, so real concern. You can all put yourselves in the place of that mother. And if there hadn't been, if it wasn't just, it was just fortuitous that I was available at that time. And luckily, our counselor had recently put into place an alternative recess situation so that I could offer that to the child who brightened up immediately and says, yes, I want to stay in that recess and color and, and read with somebody. So we were able to deal with it.
Please wrap it up.
Okay, so, so many other districts provide a lot more support for communication with families who do not speak English.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you, Annie.
Okay.
Thank you, Annie.
All right.
Thanks for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, we'll move on. Discussion items. We have some policy revisions, second reading on these. I'll go through them one by one if there's anything. First one, AC, nondiscrimination.
Yeah, now, when I'm still concerned about the language, I talked to Andy about it earlier today and he's going to get some legal counsel help on that hopefully in the next few days. So I'd like to pull that out and for another reading for next month after we get here from legal counsel. I'm afraid there might be some unintended consequences in the way it's ordered right now.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, if I can chime in on that, the, we received these recommendations from legal counsel and legal team at OSBA, but I think there are some unique pieces of this that we could have some more in-depth review by the hunger first to see how it fits and it's appropriate for this district. It's entirely appropriate for you to pull out this and do your second reading next month if you like.
Okay.
And so as long as the board is okay with that, I, that's, I'd recommend that.
Thank you.
Everybody okay? Okay. Okay. GBDA, Mother Friendly Workplace. GBAM, Staff Complaints. Anything on that one? And JFG, Student Searches. Okay. A new policy, IKH, Credit by Proficiency. This is the first reading on this one. We heard from Linda Myers about some of this stuff last time. Were there any questions or anything on this policy?
Yeah, I think there's some room for improvement on this one as well. I think it can be structured a little bit differently. The wording is fine, but the way it's set up, one and two are really supported by number three. So I don't know, it kind of reads funny unless you read through it a couple times.
Are you just referring to the fact that it just refers to equivalent work while they like maybe be?
No, mine's talking about, it talks about successfully completing classroom equivalent work, blah, blah, blah. And successfully completing classroom and equivalent work and so on. And then it talks about how it's going to be done. So it's really not a third item. It's supporting one and two. Maybe a change on the wording in number three might be a little bit more helpful. Maybe that'd be a way to take care of it. Yeah, it does, it does seem fragmented. Yeah.
Or is it, I kind of read it as number one and two, whereas like in the classroom, number three was, does that refer to how a person could get credit by proficiency by means out of the classroom demonstrating they know the material or, Linda, do you have any?
So essentially, the policy came written with one, two, three, four, and five minus the specificity under number three. So it used, so it read just standard boilerplate. So number three read through exam or combinator of evidences such as a demonstration time log or product that determines proficiency or mastery of identified standards. Period. That was the end. However, in meeting with Cherie Skerlitz, the Assistant Principal at the high school in charge of curriculum, we drafted the language that defines that more clearly because point three is really the most consistent, most regularly identified way that kids are actually accessing.
And I like that, but I think it supports one and two. That's how, that's how it's going to be determined. And I don't have a suggestion how to fix it, but it's, it's not clean.
I'm certain we can address that, you know, because we can even move around the numbers or just put the bullets under category one and two instead of number three. We can play with that.
Okay.
We'll make some modifications. Come back to your next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that one? Okay, we'll move along. Schleter Campus Conversion Project, interim report, Dan Hess, Dow IBI Group, and Nancy We've been looking forward to this one.
Yeah, so have we. Nice to be back. Okay, so I want to introduce Nancy Rad. She's an architect in our office, a senior associate, and she's serving as the project manager on this project. So she knows more of the details than I do at this point. So she's here to answer questions and explain kind of where we are in terms of the details of the plan. But we'd like to start just by kind of bringing everybody back to Steve where we were. I think the last time I was here was in May, so kind of give you a little update where we've gone since then. So since May, Nancy and another person from our office have met with staff to, you know, have the conversation about how they're going to use the building, how they need to use the building, and then how, how things are going to be laid out, where different grade levels are going to be, how the portables need to be arranged, you know, more of the details of what we call the educational specifications of the program, just like you would do with a new building. So they've done that and their most recent meeting was pretty good. I think things were pretty finalized and we'll show you the plan in a minute. We've also met with the community roots staff. I met with them a while back and then Nancy's had some more detailed conversations with them. So when we show you the site plan, we can kind of show you where we are with that. The site survey, so we had to have a surveyor come out and survey the site because there's a lot of, it's mostly site work, actually. A lot of placing the portables. We need to know specifics about elevations and grades and existing utilities and all that sort of thing so that, we need to get that done so we can proceed with our design work. And so that's, we have that and we've started. And then in general, we're in the phase of our project we call Construction Document. So we've, we did the step one, as you recall, where we defined what the scope was, specifically the items that were, you know, in the first tier category that we're going to do and then other things that, you know, would be nice, but we can't afford it. For example, painting the whole building would have been a tier two or tier three thing. Budget doesn't really allow for it, so we're not doing that. But enhancing, for example, wireless capability in the school, dealing with code issues, replacing some doors and things like that that were in disrepair, mechanical and electrical upgrades, that was tier one and those are the things that we're working on. So this is the budget I showed you last time. I noted no update from May 18th. So we're still holding with this budget. We had about $300,000 for what we call soft costs. We had $135,000 for off-site work, so that's some sidewalks and fire hydrant upgrades that the city's requiring as part of the project. Modular buildings, we had a number of 584, which is not for new modulators, but it's to pay the cost of getting, acquiring used modulators, which hopefully the actual cost is very low, but there's costs with moving them and then building foundations for them to sit on. So that's, that's what that line item is for. Remodel upgrade, that's inside the building for the most part. And then community roots, that was for the work associated with their part of the campus. And then there's a little bit of money set aside for Mark Twain Covered Play. And at the bottom, a small contingency of $100,000 just to deal with things that come up, you know, throughout the process, not just construction, but issues as we go through design as well. And so these are some of the details of where those numbers came from. Like I said, the off-site work is the sidewalk upgrades and fire hydrants and some ADA ramp work. Modulators, are we still just buying four, Nancy?
Pardon me?
I don't think it's four modulators, right?
For the middle school, there are, it's, there are four modules.
Okay.
For the middle school.
Which is eight classrooms, okay.
Yeah.
And then Mark Twain Covered Play Structure and then Community Roots. Basically, the idea with, after meeting with them, we learned is they didn't just need classrooms, they also need an office space, which makes sense. So there's three modulators that they'll have. One will serve as kind of their admin headquarters. So Nancy will go into the details of the site. It's a little bit different than what you guys saw the last time in terms of how the modulators are going to be laid out and that's come out of conversation with the staff about how they're really going to be used.
So we have a bulletin on the slide and on paper form and this will be sitting here after the meeting for, because I know it's going to be very hard to be too detailed, but there'll be an opportunity for you to come up and see it a little bit better. I'm just going to kind of walk you through the site, kind of walk you through what the day as students could be as we arrive to this building. You'll have, the school must line up a lunch later here and they're creating a student drop-off. This may not be the exact configuration, but in this location, the students can be dropped off or picked up. Traffic flow will come into the site and allow for, you know, plenty of the back line up to occur on the property. The main entry to the building has been there a long time. This gray box is the original 1938 building and it'll be isolated from the rest of the building. No students will go into there. It'll be seismically separated or isolated as well as fire separation. And just staying on the site, well, you can see, this is the pod of sixth-grade classrooms that will be located in the modular buildings out here. And there's one, two, three, four. There's also these two over here you'll see on the next slide I'll show them here, but is the LRC classroom and the computer classroom. So it's six, six sixth-grade classrooms and then LRC and computer classroom. Existing gymnasium, most remain. And this wing, we can call that, is primarily with seventh and eighth grade classrooms will be located. There are some electives and classrooms that are used by seventh and eighth graders over in this area as well, which you'll see in a minute. Then on the site, there's an existing modular here being identified for music. There are the structures that are supporting other things like the grandstand and the maintenance shop, existing sessions building, and a greenhouse. The community root school will get located up here. They'll have access to this greenhouse. So again, we have the two modular buildings that are two classrooms and a single, that's the office that they're in defense in for the community school function. They'll access the site, you know, their site from a walkway from the parking area. That's pretty much the site. Then we'll move into the building. The orientation has rotated on you in case you haven't noticed. So the main entry to the school is right here. And this existing pretty large space that was a cafeteria with a divider curtain, so to speak in it, we're going to build a permanent wall that will divide that space into cafeteria and a media center. Other things in this area are the main school office, where it's always been, the health room, the SLP, et cetera, et cetera. We have classrooms. So the exam portion of the building. So the exam portion of the building, this is going to be a really important corridor because that's where how students will flow to the other part of the building across a walkway, not covered, it's just an upper walkway. To get into this portion of the building, come through the gym and feed into this wing, which is, again, seventh and eighth grade classrooms. Those are all this like purple color. Couple of science classrooms that have existing infrastructure, and also a great science room, and an art classroom there. Again, the 1938 building, isolated from the rest. This little plan is just showing the upper level of the gym, and they'll have access to this bezzanine up here, which I think the last time a P teacher was excited about. So any questions about the layout or where you're seeing it?
All the reports from the...
Tim, it's not appropriate for the audience to ask questions.
I'm asking you.
That's okay. That's okay. So the modulators you had on the other, the other one, the sixth grade, were those double classroom modulators?
Yeah, they're on here as well.
Okay.
That's what these are. They're in this plan in the right relationship to the rest of the building. So we're creating this kind of inner courtyard here, which is nice, and the plan is to have a soft kind of grassy area here, get a walkway to this building. The rest will be, you know, a curfew area.
So will this...
Two, four, six, LRC and computer classroom.
So will there not be access to the building of the gym doors off of James Street?
Yeah, like during the day, that'd be a secured door. The door's still there.
Yeah, of course.
But I think the intent for...
The intent is to go from Slater.
You know, that all visitors...
Good idea.
Excellent.
Yeah, good idea. Okay.
You mean, how about, so how, so what about the access for Community Roots? Are they're going to come in the back of the other side?
They won't be coming in this building anymore.
No, I don't.
Yeah. Oh, so for the site access?
But they'll come in the other side, and would it, would people want to access the Slater, you know?
The idea is that, that their flow is, you know, back along this end of the building.
Yes.
Probably get a park there, block your child into the school.
Right, and would parents for the other campus want to come in and use that as a drop-off?
Yeah.
I mean, that's just...
It's going to be a matter of a lot of communications, right?
That's a big, that's a big issue, actually. That has to be, the cities, if you recall, the issue with the intersection at James and Pine and the additional traffic that will be generated in this location, what they've agreed on is basically the idea that a no-cost solution to the school district would have been either to change the start times between Pine Street and this campus, which isn't going to work, or come up with a parent drop-off that's in the upper parking lot up there on the right, where parents will be allowed to come in off Brown and then leave on Brown. So that, and the mechanism of how parents do that, you know, we're working on signage, you know, maybe a traffic management plan that is given to the parents when school starts, various things. The idea is to keep people away from going through the James and Pine intersection. Andy has pointed out, when we met with the city, is there's actually, that Brown Street is probably a better access for most people anyway, so as, as long as they're made aware that that's the right way to go, where the intention is that's how people would come to drop kids off and pick them up.
Is there any potential for looking at covering that walkway, given where we live?
You mean the...
Yeah, that, yeah, maybe there's no wiggle room in the, in the budget for it, but...
Well, we don't, we don't know the, right now, it's not in our budget, but we're doing a cost estimate in a little bit, and we'll see where we stand. I don't know, maybe there'll be some good news, or there may be a little belt tightening.
Modulators might come in lower, and you might have a little bit extra contingency.
That's right, yeah.
And how long is that pathway?
Oh, I'd say about...
I'm not holding you to it, just...
Yeah, sixty, seventy.
Okay. Reality, though, with a covered walkway, wind's going to blow, and it's true. They're really, isn't that helpful?
Right.
Any cover would be nice, huh?
I wanted to say quickly that while we're meeting with the teachers, you know, everyone has kind of a wish list, right? So we recorded a wish list, and that's on it.
Okay.
Also a few other things that, you know, and we'll just have to kind of feel our way as we get, these estimates aren't bids yet, but, you know, we'll, we'll be comfortable that our estimate gives the project air of alignment, and then we'll still have opportunity when after that, like you said, should the bids come in lower, we'll have, I'm, we're starting to stage to have some alternate bids for things, you know, kind of those wish list items.
Now, far from right, in May, weren't they talking about possible increased SDCs through the city?
There was some discussion about that.
Whatever happened with that?
You know, maybe, Andy, you want to...
Yeah, I can address that. We've had a couple of conversations, or a few actually now, with the city, and, and the, the city will be expecting a traffic SDC specific to the increased traffic in that area. And actually, it's more of a, it's more of a, to adjust for the deferred SDCs which the city approved when the high school was constructed in, in 2009 and opened in 2010. And so those SDCs will have to be paid for by the school district.
And then is Brown really the best access? It's, it's fairly narrow as it is with cars parked there, and you start having buses and, you know, anxious parents trying to get in and out. Seems like it's going to be pretty tight through there.
Well, I'm not a traffic engineer, but the city had a traffic consultant called DKS Associates do a traffic study, and actually, this recommendation came from them. Now, I don't think there's any perfect solution here, and so I do think, I'm sure if I lived down that street, might find it to be a bit disruptive. But in terms of the, sort of, the impact on the local intersections in that area, they felt that this was the least problematic.
And then when you mentioned the sidewalks and the fire hydrant upgrading, was that on the Slater Street side or James Street side, or?
The sidewalk is on the James Street side, so it's basically in front of the school, and then there's still some discussion with the, with the city how far past the school it needs to go. And then the fire hydrants are on Slater.
Now, they're tearing that up and re-sleeving the pipe soon, aren't they?
On Slater?
On Slater? I think I read that somewhere.
They're not tearing anything up, but they are re-sleeving the pipes, is my understanding.
Okay, I thought they had to dig it up to...
Well, I'm not certain about that. Joel is here, but that's a city project that's not associated with the school.
No, no, I was curious how, you know, how much of this was going to overlap.
And that wouldn't be with the water line, Todd?
Okay, I don't know if it was or not.
Sewer.
Okay, so I was asking.
Have we identified the used modulators yet? I know, I know there's something poking around, I haven't heard of it.
Well, it's been more than, there's been a lot of poking around.
Yeah, I can address that. We have reached out to a few sources for used modulators, and we have found some used modulators. We're also, we, we had hopes of working with Woodburn School District and being able to acquire some of theirs, but they, they, at least based upon the information from their superintendent, their, their modulators will not be available by the summer of 16. So with that said, we've reached out a little further, and we've found a few, and we haven't secured them yet, but we, we feel comfortable that we'll be able to get those. We'd like to secure them as soon as possible, just so we have them in hand or at least have them available to move here when we're, when we're ready for them.
Will South Albany's be available yet? Those would be pretty new.
It's our understanding of South Albany that those were a lease agreement with a vendor, and so, again, we're, we're reaching out to all sources, but those are, those were leased.
Okay. Thank you.
So the next steps in the process are, on November 5th, we'll have our 50% construction documents complete and an estimate done at that time. In the meantime, we're planning, we have to do the conditional use submittal with the city, and so we're scheduled to submit that on Friday. We have a meeting on Wednesday to go over some of the last-minute details with them about how to format things and what to include in the report. And then we'll be done with our construction documents in early December with the hopes of going out to bid around that time and opening bids probably mid-January-ish, late January, we'll see. But the idea is to get a contractor on board early in the year, and then they can start doing the renovations inside the building, you know, during wet weather, and then in the spring, they can start doing the site work and building the foundations, and over the summer, get the modulators in place and complete the project in time for school.
So duration-wise, construction-wise, it looks like, it sounds like about six months?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Questions? It looks good, Dan.
Thank you.
I think it looks, I think it looks good.
She did it, so.
Yeah, it does look good. Thank you for your work on this. It was real informative tonight, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. It's been a pleasure.
If we can get a copy of this, it'd be great, Andy, if that's possible.
Of the PowerPoint?
Yeah, just to have as reference.
Yeah, we can reach that, and I should share as well that tomorrow, Wednesday, at the latest, we'll have a full update on the website. That hasn't been updated for a couple of months, so we'll have a full update with these concepts on the, on the website as well, in addition to some additional information. So absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dan and Nancy.
Thank you.
Good report, thanks. Okay, moving on, our strategic visioning plan document 2015-2016 revisions. We talked about this at our last work session a little bit, and Andy went over some of the revisions. Since this is going into its second year, we have, there are some revisions on it. Do you want to touch on these at all, Andy, or?
The, really, the changes are minimal, other than yearly update changes that you see in the first few pages and changes in my letter. There are a few photograph changes as well, I think just to indicate maybe a little bit more current day photographs. But the, the primary changes are on, on page H, where we've placed actual data to indicate the performance during 2014 and 15. And if you recall from the conversation last time, that the, the bottom box determining the proficiency or teachers, 100% of teachers will be proficient or distinguished in the district standard for student engagement. When we, when we designed those metrics literally two years ago, that was prior to our full identification and vetting of our teacher evaluation system, so we had to make some educated guesses about what those metrics, those gold areas would be. We discovered last year that in adoption of our system for teacher observation evaluation, the Danielson framework, is that those measures did, did not measure student engagement accurately or appropriately. So we condensed the four, I believe, four or five that we had indicators into two, which we have ready access data for, to determine performance related to, to student engagement. So this is a much more usable document that will give us data over a period of years as compared to before, where we couldn't collect the data on it. So that's really the most significant revision. Otherwise, the, the remaining portions of the document continue to be what you've seen in year one.
Okay. Any questions on this? This is an action item later tonight to approve this, for this year. Everybody good? Okay. Budget committee member applications. We have an opening on our budget committee. We had two, two people submit applications, Sarah Waitsman and Jacob Cottfelter. This is also an action item tonight to approve one of these people for the opening, so anybody want to talk about either of these people or discussion? We'll need to, we'll need to pick somebody tonight because we're a little bit behind already, so. No, no preferences one way or the other?
I think it's hard. I think we've got two really good candidates.
They're both really good candidates.
Yeah, both Jacob and, and Sarah. I, I wish we had two open spots. It'd be great to have both of them, but unfortunately, we have to pick one.
I agree. I think Jacob did show up our last part of work session, so he's shown a little bit more interest, I think, but, yeah, they're both qualified and, yeah.
They would both be good. Tough decision. Okay, we'll wait and see if one of them gets nominated later on. Okay, no other discussion items tonight. We'll move on to administrator and staff reports. Andy, October 1st enrollment in the district video.
Yeah, each of you received a copy of the October 1st enrollment information for the district. I want to highlight a few points. First of all, the October 1st enrollment number is pretty significant, as we use it for a variety of purposes within the district, everything from our budgeting formula to free and reduce lunch percentage determination to other gauges throughout, throughout the year. So, and, and as we shared at the beginning of the year, it's not uncommon for early year numbers to be a little bit higher than mid-year or late year, so I think it's as best a measure as we can. And we compare October 1 to October 1 every year, so it's an apple-to-apple comparison. But points of note is, you of course first see with the asterisks there that, that Eugene Field School is down 143 students and Robert Frost School is up 106 students. That's by design. The actual enrollment at Robert Frost is higher than what we'd anticipated. We were anticipating in the 470, 480 range, and we have had some move-ins into Robert Frost over the course of the first month of the school year. We're keeping a very close eye on, on that. If you take a look, though, at the combined totals of, of Robert Frost and Eugene Field between prior year and this year, we're still about 40 or 50 students less than we were last year. And again, that's by design as well. We knew that we had a very small third grade class coming in. We knew we had a very large sixth grade class moving to Mark Twain, so that's part of the reason why moving the third graders to Robert Frost was even suggested in the first place. So, so that's proving to, to be what we had anticipated. Again, we're keeping a close eye on the high enrollment numbers. We've, we've made quite a few adjustments at Robert Frost through the leadership of Leslie Roach has really been able to, to manage that and stay on top of it. And Leslie's presenting this evening, and I'm certain she'll give you some additional insight into that. Otherwise, the, we have a number of schools that have increased enrollment. Some of those have to do with the fact that they have space available and accepted additional transfers or, or move-ins. You'll see a slight increase in, at Bethany Charter School. You'll see a larger increase at Community Roots Charter School, and they've been able to do that within the contract and the charter agreement that we have with them, both of them for that matter. Silvercrest is up about 15. Scotts Mills is up 12. Mark Twain is up 28, and again, we anticipated that increase because of the large sixth grade class moving up there. So, you know, when you take a look at the numbers, I'm going to the far right side of the chart now, the total for this year 2015 is 3,896, and when you take a look at the historical data, that's the largest this district has ever been. And you can refer very quickly to 1997, 1998, where those numbers were very close, and those of you that were on the board or in the community remember that we had very large numbers at that time. So compared to the mid or late 90s, we're about the same, a little bit higher. However, the, the K8 enrollment is still less than what we were experiencing in the late 90s. I know the high school numbers have increased this year for a variety of reasons. I know they accepted a few additional transfers there as well, so they're at about 1284 right now. So overall, it's about a 3% increase from last year, and coming from a, a planning standpoint and anticipatory standpoint, 3% is pretty good for this district. And, and what you don't want to experience is declining enrollment. So if you take a look at the last few years, we've had about a half to a percentage increase in enrollment. A 3% is a higher jump than I think what we've experienced recently, but it's still very manageable and very much within the means of this district. We are not full. Our, all of our schools are not at capacity, and so that's, that's comforting at, at a minimum to know that we can manage these numbers in our district and still anticipate growth as we move into the future.
Have you taken a look at what our enrollment would look like without transfers? Are ours growing or declining?
The, we're still looking at the data for this year, Wally. It takes a little while to sort some of that out, but based upon information that I've received at this point, we're still in the 5% to 7% net gain range for, for transfers in this district.
Okay, which is good.
Percentage, which is good, yeah.
But if we did not have the transfers, would we still be growing, or would it be declining or...
Well, that's a good question. No, we haven't drilled down the numbers enough to know with that. It's maybe a challenge because we'd have to take a look at...
I understand.
... actual transfer percentages for the last, you know, 10, 15 years.
I'm just curious if our growth is really due to, to transfers or if there's also some internal...
Sure, sure. I'll, we'll look into that. We'll see if we can...
We can find, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Otherwise, I won't answer any questions that you may have.
No questions? Thanks, Andy.
You're welcome.
District video.
Keep my fingers crossed that they don't come near the earth. This is a wireless internet here, and it's, it's exactly what we want. But I, I, I do want to share with you that the district video is, is finished. Actually, we did find one tiny error that, that we have to address, but this is... But this is officially released tonight and we'll be sending out an email tomorrow along with a Facebook post and some additional information to get this video out. To keep in mind, this video has now been about, I don't know, maybe six months in the making or so. And it came from the efforts by a number of people in this community, including many groups and individuals who donated to see it happen, to create, as it says in the title, even an anthem. An anthem for this school district as a unifying presence within this school district. And as you have discussed with your communication plan and will during your work session this month as well, this is, I think, the next natural step for you, and that is to provide a piece of work that's professionally done and really does, I think, describe the culture of this district in a way that can only be done in an audio video format like this. So I'm going to let the video do its talking. And again, this thing, I don't know where I'm here. Oops. I apologize. It may have been buffer too much. I hope that's going to work.
I'm in school. I get to learn a lot more history and I love history about this town. I'm glad I'm a student because the silver ball is pretty. It's all the land is so, and it's a key. I'm unique because I have a house that I live in, but some people didn't even have a house. So I'm special. I'm proud to be a silver ball student because you're able to be yourself. I'm proud to be a silver ball student because I can be me because I'm relaxed.
I apologize.
I'm unique because I'm a really, really good climber. I mean, you're different from some girls, something and, and you're very good at something.
I'm unique because I enjoy. I'm unique.
I'm unique and I'm smart.
I'm unique because I live in a small group.
I'm unique because I'm the only teacher in my class.
I'm unique because I can speak Russian. I'm a root and I love to be a teacher in a classroom just like when I grow up.
I'm a Viking and I want to be a lord when I grow up.
Or a doctor, but I also want to be a vet since I love like pets. If I moved like dogs and cats, if that would make the world a better place, I would recycle. Don't we use any news?
If I can make the world a better place, I would be a superhero.
Well, I'm picking up dog with dog at the well because when my dad was hunting, we saw so many cans. When we saw candy, we say can and we.
Get out there, Dad. We just saw too many. If I could make the world a better place, I would aspire to be awesome.
If I could make the world a better place, I'd bring peace to the world.
If I could make the world a better place, I would volunteer.
If I could make the world a better place, I would build a school and have a dream by my house.
If I was a parent, I would, I would, um, if I was a parent, I would, I would volunteer more now because if I volunteer more, I'd probably have a stronger relationship with my dad. I just get to know him better, love him, enjoy him.
If I were a parent, I would donate money to me.
I would be accepting to all kids.
If I were a girl, I would limit the number of weeks that the school allows.
If I were a parent, I should spend more time reading the book.
If I was a parent, I would let my kids learn about how to the earth and recite me.
If I was a parent, I would become a result by joining a parent, a parent club at the school.
I would make sure that people are being safe on it. Be sure that people are safe and responsible.
If I was a parent, I would help everyone be great.
If I was a parent, I would participate in more school activities.
I wish parents would help their kids try new things and see what they want.
I would, as parents, work together to make the school just a better for us.
I'm a mouse and I can't wait to be a fox.
I'm a pirate, but I cannot wait to be a fox.
I'm a Viking, but I can't wait to be a fox.
I'm a wolf cat and I can't wait to be a fox.
I'm a fox and I am proud to be a fox.
I'm a wolf cat and I can't wait to be a fox. I know you better.
Together, together, together.
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 We are.
We are.
We are.
We are.
We are.
We are.
Together, we are the foxes.
I think it's important that we recognize Josie at the end. I think as all of you know, little Josie McGill in the wheelchair died this summer. But in working closely with her parents, who are fully supportive of her being in this video, I think it really adds a dimension that we wouldn't have otherwise had. So, real special. So you'll get a chance to see this on your own, on your own computer after tomorrow and without the buffering problems that we've had here. Nonetheless, I think you've still got a pretty good impression of what this video is all about. I think it's going to be a strong piece for this district as we move forward.
Thank you for showing that, Andy. For me, that reminds me of why we're all here, so. Awesome kids. Okay. Erv, you want to get the lights? Thanks. Okay, Steve, financials.
I added the unit date financial statements through the month of September and your packets and revenue and expenditures are tracking, tracking just, just fine, start the year here. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Since we just got it, is there anything that you'd like to point out? Any concerns?
No.
Okay.
Again, the, we get, we get a heavy dose of the state school fund early with the double payment in July. Property taxes really don't wind up until November. And then we just went through our first big payroll in September and those are right in line with what we budgeted.
All right, okay. Other questions for Steve? Thank you. Okay, Bethany Charter School annual, annual report. Kim Merklin, yes, please. Kim's the seventh eighth teacher at Bethany?
I am, yeah. Third year, seventh and eighth grade teacher. So thanks for having me today. You should have a report in front of you, I hope.
Yes.
They were sent.
Perfect.
It was in our pack.
So just a couple of highlights. We have 137, I believe, students this year and we're at capacity. We have a pretty deep wait list for most of our classes. We added full day kindergarten this year, so that was exciting for us. So we now have five full-time teachers for the first time. And that's a great situation for our kinders because there's 15. They have a tiny little classroom, but they have a full-time teacher and they've got an aide for five hours in there, so it's a good situation. We were asked specifically to talk about the S-BAC and the administration of the test and kind of our results and our challenges. And I think everybody across the board, it was a learning year for everyone. And we were, we learned a lot through the test. I'd say the majority of our test scores landed in the fairly decent range. Some of them were challenges in certain classrooms. So what we learned about that test is that there's a couple of things that you're going to have to do in order to be successful with it. So as a staff, we've met to kind of talk that through and figure out, you know, one of, for example, one of the things is because of the testing window, you really need to finish the majority of your, of your curriculum instruction by the end of April, the first part of May. So the pacing of our classrooms have changed because of it. I would say also that figuring out where the, where the challenges for the students are, is it with the technology of the test, learning how to administer that test? It's not a simple click-through anymore. It's, has a lot of variety to it. So students are challenged by having to, you know, maybe this is a multiple choice question, but this one over here is a drag and drop and a click and a manipulate. So I know that we had some technology challenges with it. I would say overall, though, my kids actually, personally in my classroom, they actually liked the test. They found that it was more interesting to take. They were glad that it wasn't ABC, ABC every single time. So my students actually really enjoyed the challenge of the test and the variety of the test. And it's the only test I've personally ever administered where my kids walked away telling me they learned something from the test. The new writing method is they read about the test. They read some kind of piece. For example, some of my kids read about the Himalayas and then they have to write a piece about it. And they walked away from that test having learned something. They were like, hey, did you know this and this? And there was a, somebody else learned something about a company and they were excited about that, so. So I think it's just one of those things where, you know, you have to make adjustments as you go and the couple of test scores that came in a lot lower than we were happy with, then we just have to ask ourselves why and talk to the kids about that and say, you know, how did you feel about your test? And frankly, you know, we've never been that school that only teaches to the test, but at the same time, the kids themselves want to be successful. And you don't want the kids to feel, they know what their scores are. You know, their parents get the scores and the kids know what their scores are. So you don't want the kids to walk away feeling like they didn't perform to their best at the test either. So a couple of the numbers were different from, I think, what's in your report. One notably was the eighth grade science test. I think in the report was 62%. It's actually 92%.
Oh, wow. Big change.
It's a big difference.
Yeah, it's a big difference. Yeah, so, so that number was a lot higher. And then one of our numbers was actually a little lower after the adjusted scores came in. And those are, our sixth grade mathematics score was actually a little lower, 27%. So again, just as a staff, we just are looking to figure out if it's more practice or if it's, you know, if we did, if the kids did really well, what contributed to that success and share that as a staff. Do you have any questions about anything in that?
I have a couple of questions about some other things in your report. One about discipline, you mentioned here that student discipline is, continues to honor positive actions. Can you give some examples and also can you tell us a little bit about discipline issues at the school?
Absolutely. Discipline issues are mainly handled relationally. So we really are a caring school and we try really hard to develop relationships with our students so that, and our parents, so that when we do have discipline issues, we have a relationship to draw on. One of the things that we do is, is the pride program is what we do to encourage positive behavior. So that's practice kindness, respect, inspiration, determination, and excellence. And we recognize students throughout the week and then we hold pride slips as an assembly every Friday and celebrate the things that the kids have done. And then at the end of the semester, we have awards that we give for those specific character traits that we're looking for. So that's, you know, the, in terms of positive reinforcement, this year we're trying something new, the house cup, you know, so our kids, just to, that's mainly because we want to be able to help out our janitor and keep our classrooms a little cleaner. So that's more of a classroom competition and we've implemented a leadership program for our upper grades to try and kind of help lead the way for that. But yeah, in terms of discipline issues, I think, you know, each class teacher handles that a little bit differently, but we do have a referral system if it needs to be, you know, communication with parents needs to go forward. And for the most part, we just, I know I especially really try hard to just, really? You know, let's talk about that, you know, and just really deal with the kids at a heart issue level.
And then, I think on the last page, talk about the upper, upper grade staff members, I believe it's you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, me and one other.
Spending a considerable amount of time analyzing student performance in math. And can you tell us a little bit about what you've done and what you've found?
Do you mean in terms of the S-BAC or do you mean in terms of the math program in general?
Math program in general.
So a considerable part of our day is spent in math. I know I personally have three levels of math running in my classroom. And we, we focus basically on, we use Oregon-focused math and with the Common Core supplement, which is what I think a lot of the district schools use. And I have found that adding in the Common Core additional concepts actually requires even more outside, finding other resources. So, and for me specifically, my kids also need to be prepared to take their high school placement test. So I spend a lot of time making sure that they have the review of the skills and that they have the math fluency that they need. So there's a couple of different things you've got to think about with the, with the Common Core. One is their fluency and their ability to do mental math and to do math quickly. And then you've also got the concept itself. Can they do the concept? So we spend a lot of time just making sure that the kids are passing their proficiencies. We follow a proficiency model. 80% of their score comes from their tests and 20% comes from their homework and formative quizzes. So I quiz, for example, I quiz my kids every day on their math concepts and then I work in small groups to make sure that they have the concepts that they need to move forward before they are, they ever take a test. So like I say, and then they've got a weekly packet that reviews past concepts that they need to have. And I'm always reviewing forward once we hit those concepts to make sure they're ready for their, their high school placement test as well. Because that's Because that's kind of a different beast, so. So, that's kind of where, how I hit math in my classroom. I know the classroom across the way from me also spends ninety-five minutes a day in math in small groups, just making sure everybody's, you know, getting where they need to be.
Thank you. I've got a question with the sixth grader. It seems like looking at the S-Back kind of test, they're, they're a little bit of the outliers.
Yeah, they are.
They seem like they've, they've identified an area for improvement there with that group. Do you, any contributing factors as to what, what's going on with the sixth grade as to why their scores might be a little lower?
Well, those are my kids this year. See, so they came up to me as seventh graders. And I would not say that that score does justice to where the kids should be. So, I've had a lot of conversations about that group of kids specifically. I actually have a volunteer who comes in to help me with math two days a week and takes just that group of kids. So, we're very aware, we've kind of targeted that group in terms of, you know, trying to figure out why that happened. And I personally think that there was some lack of technology training to the test. That test was the first one that was administered out of the whole school. So, I think it was partially just a lack of practice for how to take that test. And I think that there was also just, you know, maybe, it takes a lot of training. I mean, I know, you know, one of the criticisms of the S-Back in general is that it does take a lot of time away from instruction just to instruct the kids in how to take the test. Because the test itself is not, it's not something that's really simple for kids to just intuitively know how to take. You have to actually take days of instruction to just teach them how to take it because of the drag and the drop and because of the different elements of how they have that test and how to use the little boxes in order to type in their answers. It's, you know, it's, it's a fairly complicated process for them to understand how to take the test. So, personally, I feel like now that I know those, that group of kids, because they're my kids now, I would say only about a third of those kids should have really hit the lower end of that test. And the rest of them, I, I really think it was probably a technology training issue. I do, now that I know those kids and I've assessed them for now.
Well, that's important that you understand why. And it's good to hear that, that you guys understand why, so.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I, I personally emphasize that test quite a bit because, you know, it's one of their paths to graduation. And they're not going to have years and years and years to hit this test before they get the, the one time at, you know, eleventh grade. And so, I told my students, you know, last year, I said, you guys better take this really seriously because it is the only time you're going to really get to see this and get a really good look at this test before you, you know, try to pass it at the high school. So, I mean, you can see the seventh and eighth grade numbers were fairly high across the district, so.
Thanks. The important thing is they know the material. So, it sounds like you believe the most part that grasp the concepts.
Yeah, and, and we're making sure that there's no holes in that, you know what I mean, in terms of going over past material. Fortunately, most curriculum will review, you know, so we're just making sure that they've got everything, you know, that they need so that there's no holes in that understanding.
Other questions for Kim? Thank you, Kim. Very good report. Thanks. Leslie Roach, Robert Frost. Welcome, your first board report.
My first report, go easy on me. So, I brought everyone a handout today just focusing on one major component that we're, we're focusing on this year at Robert Frost, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, PBIS. It's that acronym that we all start throwing around. So, last year, as a part of Robert Frost's School Improvement Plan, they identified school culture and climate with the kids as an area for growth and improvement. So, they sent a group of staff to the PBIS conference and training in June. And that team started working with me after they came back from the conference over the summer. And we planned an in-service for all of our certified and classified staff to be trained on the new system and our new expectations, which is basically just teaching the students and our staff the same expectations. So, we, as adults, know how each child is supposed to behave at recess or in the hallway or going through the lunch line. So, just really basic expectations. And we spent time during in-service training folks about those school-wide expectations. We wrote school-wide lessons. So, the first two weeks of school, all of our teachers, three times a day, delivered the exact same lesson. So, all the kids knew how to walk in the hall before they went to lunch because we wrote a lesson and everybody went out and practiced and, so we were all on the same page. And then we also created school-wide rewards. So, there's a little picture of a pause that we hand out to our students. And we hand those out like it's supposed to flow like water, like rain. At any time you, a student is doing what they're supposed to be doing, they should be earning a pause. And PAWS stands for Pride in Yourself and Your School, Always Be Kind, Work Hard, and Stay Safe. So, it's a way for kids to be recognized by an adult that they're, they're being a good student. They're doing what they're, they're meeting our expectations. And then we are using these PaaS for fun events and awards in the school. We have a monthly assembly. We just had our first one. And we honored Students of the Month who showed pride in themselves or pride in their school. So, every classroom had a student who was honored for pride. And then there's fun prizes. We did the Dice of Destiny at our assembly. So, they got to roll these big dice. If their ticket got called and they won a prize from a different prize box, we had, you know, six different prize boxes lined up. So, it was very fun and the kids loved the reward and the recognition. Now, on the data side of things, in order to keep moving towards our goal of improving school culture and school climate, we have purchased SWISS, which is a database that we're going to be using and entering all of our referrals into so that we can actually run reports by type of behavior, by time of day, by location in the building. And then we review that data monthly as a PBIS team. And we develop lessons or interventions for areas that might be an issue. So, let's say, right now, I'm dealing with a lot of recess issues. People are getting hit all over the place with wall balls. So, we need to have a wall ball lesson. That's true. It's like the second time this week I've had to deal with wall balls and it's only Tuesday. So, so we need to, we need to do a better job of teaching our fourth graders how to play wall ball and what the rules are. And so, we take that on as the adults in the building and we are proactive. We go out, we teach, we develop lessons, we teach kids, we practice. We may have a recess where we all go practice playing wall ball so that we know that the expectations are clear. So, it's a lot on the proactive and preventative side. And so, we're going to monitor our data, we're going to keep acting this year, and we're going to continue to keep being positive and rewarding students as well. So, that's the long and the short of PBIS at Robert Frost. This is really important for us because we are big this year. And so, it's, we've got traffic going all over the place. If you come and watch our kiddos going to PE and out to music and we're walking all over the place in the hallways. So, we've even got tape down the center right now in a few hallways because it's, it's little roads and we've got little bodies going all over the place and we need to make sure that they're, keep being safe. So, it's, this is our big, our big push this year is really working on being safe and being proactive.
You have a lot of new staff members, so it's really great that you're trying to align expectations. It can be really frustrating for students if different teachers have different expectations, particularly around behavior.
Yeah, and it's really, we have so many staff, from our kitchen staff to our custodians to our wonderful assistants who are in our building in different places during the day and they see behaviors that maybe the certified staff doesn't see. So, it's important that we're all aligned on the same page.
Is it going okay with the third graders up there? And I know you're really big, a lot of bodies.
Yeah.
Been a big adjustment or is it? It's been fairly?
Um, it's, it's, I would encourage you to come observe lunch one day.
As smooth as could be expected, maybe?
Yes, it's going smoothly. It's just, it's a big change. And like you said, about fifty percent of us are new this year, so we're, we're rolling with it, we're going with the flow. And then the other half are like, whoa, wait a second, I can't, you know, I used to have this mezzanine that I was able to do the small group in or I used to have an alcove that it was just me and instead there's three other adults in desks here. So, it, there's an adjustment, but it's, we're not having, I wouldn't say we're having huge traffic jams or issues. We're just, you know, working our way around the bugs a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks. Other questions for Leslie? Okay, thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Jamie McCarty, Silvercrest and Victor Point. Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. I guess with an S and a B, you're always last. I've been last every four, but being last in October is better than last in June, like last.
This is true, yeah.
I think we're all kind of, we were, so. Thanks for having me. It's been an awesome start of both schools. I'll be brief, I know last on the agenda, but tried to just put in perspective a start of a school year for you. And on the second time I come and talk to you, it's going to be a little bit more of S-Back data and where we are in the school year now that we've gotten rolling a little bit and so we can compare. And I'll get you a lot more data with our district goals as well as our school goals with data and testing and that kind of stuff. But I wanted to give you just a little idea of both of our schools' start. I did have it here, but I think I'll just go, you have it in front of you, so I think I'll just go right off. We are up at Silvercrest. We have a hundred and fifty-one students and we ended last year with thirty, or a hundred and thirty-five. So, we're up sixteen students there, kind of like Andy talked about a little bit earlier. We've really had quite a few blended classes at our early grades at Silvercrest and we've tried to keep our early classes this year straight. So, our kindergarten, first, second, are straight grades. And then we have blends throughout in our older classes. We, we just feel it's super important to get our kiddos reading, writing, math at grade level, no blends. And then as they get a little older, that blend becomes easier. So, that's kind of been our focus to start. We have five new staff members at Silvercrest. We have a new first grade teacher. We have a new six, seven teacher. We have a new ELL title teacher. And then we have two classified support staffs that are new as well with all-day kindergarten at two-hour position and EA position. We were able to hire Sandy McLean, which is kind of a longtime Silvercrest, our library or our music teacher, and we were able to hire her full-time. Victor Point is up to two-twenty-two and we finished last year at two-sixteen, so we're up six students this year from last year. And so, the buildings are full, but, but a really, really great start. The very first page, you see our very own Dandy Stevens and Marie Traeger. And that is our new first grade teacher, Ms. Capener. And she was the first ever Oregonian to win a California Casualty Insurance. They fund and are insurance agents for teachers and administrators and they're out of California. But she won a $2,500 grant for her class in our school at Silvercrest. So, that was a big day and a lot of press was out there for that. And so, that was a great start. And then on the right, there's our new, newly appointed Victor Point ASB group. So, those are our student leaders and, and that we just appointed to start the school year. It's been a busy start. And so, that's just the homecoming and that Silvercrest and Victor Point's float in the homecoming parade. And so, we all had a march and that was Silvercrest's first-ever float. And they did win the superintendent's award, so they were pretty excited about that, which is the top float in the parade. That, you can't really see it from that picture, but it's a full-on pirate ship, raider ship, and they did a great job with it. But it was an awesome way to start the year. Christmas tree run has, went off October 2nd and we had our biggest amount of students ever at the Christmas tree run. We had over six hundred students run up at Silvercrest. And that is Victor Point's eighth grade class and Silvercrest's eighth grade class there at the finish line. Butte Creek, Central, Howell, Prattam, Victor Point, Evergreen came for the first year, Scotts Mills, and of course, Silvercrest. And fifty volunteers were there that day. Silverton Cross Country team came up and Mr. Cross had his kids start each race and finish behind the last runner in each race. And so, their kids cheered on our kids. And I think he did some recruiting, I saw some writing downs and names. But I think it's, it's great to get their runners up there and work as a community on that thing. And it takes a lot to pull that off, but that was a, a huge start. We've had our first Student of the Month assembly and we'll have an assembly each month, you know, recognize our Student of the Month and Awesome Kid awards. And so, those are kind of the pictures of each, each of our award winners. And our, the next slide is kind of our school-wide focuses for the year. And in September, we started off with the importance of attendance and just showing up. And we know the students that just show up every single day and make that commitment are successful. And the other focus for September was school safety. And we did a lot of work as an admin team before the school with Silverton PD and Marion County and, and kind of our safety protocols. And I think all of our schools have carried that out and we've spent a ton of time with safety and attendance this first month. But as you can see, October's anti-bullying, so we'll focus just on what is it to be a great person, what is it to be a great kid? We won't focus on not doing things, we'll focus on what do we do, how are we nice, how are we leaders? A lot of put-ups. We'll finish with an end-of-the-month assembly and bring that all together. November and December is showing gratitude giving rather than getting. January is goals in your future. February, of course, Valentine's, having a great heart, sincerity. April, school pride month and Earth Day. May is kind of our middle school track meet for the, for our district. And so, that's going to be our physical fitness month, PE. And June is kind of our celebration. And just a little bit of data, we, to start the year, we've, we've spent a ton of time on attendance and how we start the year. And so, that was our thirty-day challenge. And we had certificates for kids in the first thirty days with perfect attendance and each class celebrated those as a class. You can see our, kind of the last three-year trend data, the thirteen-fourteen school year. And as you're well, well-aware, last year was our first big focus on, I think, district-wide, on just every school, just putting that onus on attendance. And you can see just the huge raises in attendance. What, what you attend to, what you look at, what you celebrate and, and what you display tends to increase. And we've put a lot on that and you can see that a one-point-three and a one-point-five last year, we held steady at Victor Point with a ninety-seven-point-seven start, which is just awesome attendance. And, and we went down point-two at Silvercrest. We had a pretty good little bug flew the last week of that, but still very proud of that. And then just on the school safety side, it's been a primary focus to start our year, monthly drills, our trainings with staff. We've all become on the same page. Our staff has trained our kids with our brand-new safety protocol and I love you guys' website and, and just everything our district's doing. And got some great feedback from, from our parents. Just thank you, thanks for making this important, thank you for making this a part of your school. And, and it's, you know, I think that they, we've put it in our newsletters, we've kind of been pretty proactive in our approach with school safety, especially with, with our recent happenings in Oregon. And just that awareness, I think, is important. And so, we talk about it and, and had a parent the other day come to the school and a student let the parent in from one of the side doors where we don't enter. And the parent, you know, just mentioned it to me, hey, and you know, it was a great staff discussion that day about we have one entry, that entry's through the front door. We talked to our students about that and it was just a great learning for us. And so, that was September focus. And then just finishing with our school-wide goals, our vision is, is our district's vision and, and together cultivating character and academic growth in each student every day. That is on every staff meeting, every agenda, everything that we talk about with our, with our staff and students. A positive attitude is number one at Silvercrest and Victor Point. And, and I think staff gets tired of, you know, maybe here and that or, but that is who we are and that's what we want to stand for. And that's every kid, we want to feel like they cannot wait to come to school, that they love our school, they go home, they talk to our parents about our school, they tell them about the day, they tell them about their teacher. And, and if we can have kids that leave our school that want to come back, that's the kind of culture we want. And our school is committed to the highest standards, success for every child, and you won't hear a staff member give an excuse. If we fail, we fail and we're, we're not going to say it's because of this kid or this culture or... or this school or history or tradition. We'll take it and we'll move forward and we'll become better, but we're never going to use an excuse. All of our kids can learn at a high level and and it doesn't matter where they come from, where they're at and where they're going, our kids can learn and it's our job. And if they don't, we fail. As a leader, I fail and as a teacher, they fail in that class. As a support staff, that that staff, we all fail. And we'll take it and we'll get better and we'll rally around each other, but we're not going to come up with an excuse. And those are our four goals, very last, what we're focused on. And student learning is our number-one priority and we all students will make the appropriate yearly growth because we have some students, you can't say a year grows on each student, some students are two years below. We're not going to say that student's a year's growth is okay. That student has to go a year and a half in that one year and then the next year, another year and a half and we got to catch that student up. And there's there's nothing else besides that. So appropriate growth, we got our super high, high students, they might not make a year's growth. They are so dang high that if we can push them to another level and find out another notch, that's a success. And they might not make, but our our middle of the kids of the road, hey, those are kind of your average, your 80%, those students need a year's growth. They started in the sixth grade, they were at a 6.1, we need them to a 7.1. If we don't get them there, we fail. So just looking at that and making sure that happens. And then holding students behaviorally and academically accountable. Number three, creating that positive safe school culture and we talked about our monthly themes and our character traits because character is as important as our academics and raising great kids is as important as raising smart kids. And if we can raise a great kid and a smart kid, we've got them. And then lastly, to have a sustainable education where Victor Point and Silvercrest are considered an exceptional school by you, by our parents, by our superintendent, and I think that's important. And with a new evaluation system, that is going to be our focus there is having us all on the same page with understanding what's expected, understanding what we need to do to move students forward by our Danielson model. And so we've taken one day per month that is dedicated to that piece and we're going to learn that together. It's brand new, we can't just expect it to be, we got to do it together. And so that's our our fourth goal.
Very good, questions?
Quick question about attendance. In the past, we've had some issues with kids getting pulled out for hunting. Do you expect that to be an issue this year?
Yeah.
It's supposed to continue to be?
But you know what? Here's the conversation that we didn't have two years ago is, my son is so stressed out, we're going to take him hunting. So we're going to take, my son is so stressed out or my daughter is so stressed out, we're going to take him, but we promise we won't miss anything else. If they get sick, we'll send them to school, but we got to go. Okay. You know, and again, I think that's important, but also I think, as I would say, we we have one hunting, you know, family's important as well.
It is.
And those memories those kids will have. Hopefully, they can shorten it from six to three days. Hopefully, they'll do a little something. And like they said, we'll bring them back for a Monday, we'll do some different things. They have made that commitment, that has shifted, but doing things with families are as important. They're going to remember that more than setting up.
So families are working with it, trying to work on it.
Yes, they are.
Good, good. Other questions? Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Excellent report. Okay, moving along, any board reports tonight? Anybody? Correspondence? I don't think we have anything, Andy. Second audience with visitors, would anyone like to address the board? Okay. Action items. First one, appointment of a new budget committee member to the three-year term. Do we have a?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and nominate Jacob Plutfelder.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor of Jacob? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one opposition. Okay, and approve the 2015-2016 revisions to the Strategic Visioning Plan document. Is there a motion for this one?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll move out of regular session, we'll go into executive session under RRS 192660 to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection and RRS 192660 to hear a complaint against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent who does not request an open hearing, personnel appeal, and complaint received by the board. Thank you, everyone.